Welcome to the meeting, this Grant School District for August 10, 2017. Please raise for the plate reading.
I pledge allegiance to my life, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Is there somebody in roll call, please?
Mr. Casey?
Present.
Mr. Dewaite?
Present.
Mr. Duffy?
Present.
Mr. Lesh?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Olewski?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. Timlin?
Present.
Mr. Sheridan?
Present.
I'm present. Okay.
Mr. President, if I just may interrupt you, for tonight's, for tonight's meeting, under the item number three personnel reports, item, item number six and item number seven has been deleted from the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Presentation by PFM consultants Dean Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, I have some hard copies to read, the president give them to distribute as, as appropriate. We can make them available electronically as well, but for now I have some hard copies. Thank you for, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Dean Kaplan, I'm a managing director with Public Financial Management, and for the past couple of months, I've been working on a project that's been funded by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, National Resources Network Program for Cities, to look at the long-term finances of the district. About, about 20 copies, I think, so.
Keep passing, keep passing. Keep working. We got, we got, we got, is this a seven?
What'd I do? Thanks!
So, this is, we're here at a rather unusual assignment in that normally we would provide you with a final report in probably in the next few weeks, on the first day of our work. Knowing that you had a major time-sensitive decision to make tonight, we thought we'd provide you with a initial draft of what we're, what we've been working on, to provide you some context for what we're seeing in our work. Our assignment is to provide a kind of broad overview of the district's finances, not just to the board and the administration, many of you have obviously been working on these issues in some detail for many years, but also to other stakeholders, also to the Department of Education, obviously, and other parties who would like to know more about the detail of district finances. Our goal is to provide an independent review, not just of where things are, but where things will be in the next couple of years, and then provide eventually, in the second phase of our work, a menu of different options, some of which may be, usually for approval, and others which are in the everything-on-the-table area of options for the district to address its financial challenges. Really what I want to know is kind of what's happening now, where are the, what are the options, what are the, what are the steps you might take in the future. So for tonight, we're really presenting a, a not-final draft, where we were looking for further input from you and from other parties over the next several weeks, and then we will be available to come back with a full report, and we will see that this, this one in particular is, is trudgy. We also, we also, we started our work, as you see on pages six and seven, with a, again, pitching this report in a kind of frame for people who are not as familiar with the finances, we're thinking about making the, the ordinary extraordinary. You guys are very familiar with the district's financial challenges. For us coming in as outsiders, we were, you know, surprised to see that there was a going concern in the district's last two audits, that's not particularly typical or usual in the governments we work with around the country and school districts we work with. So we wanted to make sure we were highlighting that as a fairly extraordinary factor, particularly for, for the Department of Education. What we, what we did in looking at the numbers and working with, working with the business office, was to take the expenditures and revenues that are projected for, for this fiscal year, to carry them forward, assuming that there's, there's no corrective action taken, or that you just take what you have and you run it forward for the next five years, and determine whether, look at major budget categories and see what, what the results are. That gives us a baseline, so that we can see where do we need to go from there over a multiple period of years, not just this year or next year, to bring the, the district budget into balance. So the focus is on major issues and trends, but we also grow out most other spending categories, it's sort of inflationary growth, if you're looking at basic supplies or other issues. There are, of course, one-time expenditures and other things in your budget that will grow in the weeds. So for our baseline, making our kind of assumptions of no corrective action, we assume that real estate taxes were at the same level they are now, that historical growth in state, state subsidies, which have been above the statewide average, continue at that level for both basic and, and special end, that there were inflationary increases, again, inflation historically, the last few years has been around 2%, and that's what the Federal Reserve Bank is also predicting going forward, inflationary increases for salaries and wages, and then historical increases in, in charter tuition, and other outside tuition. No additional adjustments to debt service, no new issues who are dead, and obviously those are things which the district may well need, but for this, we're holding, holding those things flat. So obviously, this, you know, given where you're starting from, in this budget, you'll see on page nine, this produces a substantial deficit, particularly next year, once the full outstanding current debt services rolled into the finances. I would note, just as a, as a point, that until yesterday, we didn't know that you had received the one-time plan time reimbursement, so the, this year's deficit has shown, I think, a little over $8 million, and will probably come down somewhat compared, compared to that number with the received one-time state funds, depending on how you, how you assign them. So again, in our final version, we'll, we'll adjust that number. But what you see is a, a fairly large structural deficit that's growing about $3 or a little more million dollars a year going forward, so, so there's a kind of a, a major gap to make up, but there's also continual, continuous, potentially expanding hole going forward. We also looked at the most recent audit, which obviously is dated, and it's from 2015, where you're showing a significant fund balance that's positive, but largely based on the fact that you have reserves for debt service and healthcare, and your unassigned fund balance, the cash you can work with, is obviously significantly negative over $20 million. So that's a, that's a, in the long-term, an issue that will challenge your cash flow as well. One of the things we were concerned about is that as you face that over time, you've seen this happen with other districts, facing this kind of hole, you'll get to a point where it's very difficult to pay ongoing bills, and, and that challenge will force some of your better vendors to walk away. So you want to, you want to be in a position where your fund balance is coming back towards negative, you have cash flow, you have working capital, go ahead and cope. And when we see this kind of situations, there, of course, are not simple solutions. Been talking to folks around the district, we did hear a lot of suggestions about various budget areas that could be trimmed, and some of those are quite, quite achievable, but at this point, even if you eliminate some large categories of spending, as noted on page 11, you can still have a negative result. So you're in a case where, one of the reasons we're suggesting to put all the ideas on the table is that you'll need a lot of them, in order to fix this hole over the top. So I won't spend a lot of time in the next few pages, including page 13, these are, again, largely for the purpose of parties which have not been spending such time doing the district's finances, but we look, you know, we broke out kind of what your school configuration is, and the current, current enrollment, and the current year, the enrollment in districts, why, what it looks like, trends over time, which obviously are pretty stable, and your enrollment study shows are pretty stable going forward, and the special education enrollment, which has gone up as a percentage over time, and over a long period of time, while it's been fairly stable the last few years, the number has gone up as your enrollment has gone a little bit. Again, for the purposes of, particularly of outsiders, on page 17, just looking kind of broadly at your budget, you can see that the vast majority of your revenue obviously comes from the state, and from local revenues that you, you focused over for, and then obviously the largest area expenditures for salary and wages. So your, your inputs are, are a limited number of years, and your outputs are a limited number as well. One of the other areas we looked at was sort of where has this been going over the last five years, where have the growths in which your budget categories, as you can see on 18, your combined annual revenue growth has been about 3%, and that's in part driven by tax increases you voted for, and in part driven by state aid growing at about that amount. What you really note there is that P-Surges reverses have been going way up, and of course, that's largely offset on the expenditure side by P-Surges costs going way up. But again, in your, in your, when you look at the sort of slightly colored bars there, your total expenditure average over the last couple of years has been going up faster than total revenues, and the, while you have moderated salaries and headcount a little bit, the health insurance and P-Surges and charter tuition have been outstriking that growth rate, so obviously, as you know, it's a difficult, a difficult problem. We looked a little bit about staffing over time, and of course, the last couple of years you have brought staffing down, obviously, but over the last, kind of looked over the five-year trend, most of the staffing categories have grown a bit, except for maintenance, correct? I know you've made some significant changes in the, in the balance. Debt service on page 20 is a, you probably see it a few times when we've done issuance, and particularly earlier this year, when you did the funding borrowing, and I think obviously that's, you know, when the major challenges in your debt structure, and eventually the district will have to find a way to, to accommodate a large number of deficits, is obviously something you see in other areas. So the broad recommendation we'll be making, obviously, when we do the final report, is say that, you know, a long-term coordinated plan is necessary. You're not going to, you're not going to be able to shoot through this whole hill in one year, there will be a need to address multiple areas, and the, in the short term, you will need help, and to draw on multiple sources. And we'll, we'll have, we'll present some of the options that are, are potential at the end of this, to note tonight, and then we'll, we'll have those other areas, and follow-up area to follow. I want to spend a couple of minutes on some of our, our work with peer districts. One of the things we found is it's very hard to get a good sense of where you stack up against other districts, and sort of where your major cost fibers are, and how much you are headed behind, when we find the boards here, where they ask, how are we doing compared to other places? And that's always a subjective and not objective question, but what we did was we, we went to the state's kind of financial report database, and compared to two different groups of districts, one where other districts had had a least gate factor enrollment, and, and had a .6 NPI ratio, and were not Philadelphia district. So that's one group, which were probably sort of similarly sized districts, although they're not all exactly the same as you, in different levels. And then we also looked at the Lack of Law County districts, because obviously, although you're much bigger than the others, you do have the same kind of local cost base, so you're in a caution, probably fairly similar on various services. So what we did in each of the graphs, starting at 24, was we looked first at similarly sized districts, and you'll see that Scranton is always the gold bar, the dotted line is the EDM of those districts, so you can get a sense of how you are compared to the others, and then the bar is expenditures in each category over EDM. So the first one is just general expense, total expenditures, and you can see that Scranton is a little bit lower than the comparable sized districts. And again, if you look through the list, you'll see that there are people in really very, district in very different situations, so Coqueta Mountain way over to the left is very spread out, is obviously going to have a high cost basis. If you look at Reddick on the right, Kent District, probably limited transportation costs, and is in a, a county which is, is very different from Lack of Law. But one thing you will notice is that the kind of the slightly larger districts, like Erie and Reddick, have a little bit of an economic scale, and clearly, as an urban district, you face challenges with a high number of students in poverty, a lot of English language learners, immigrants, and probably more homeless students than other districts, but you also have some ability, because of your size, to offset that a bit, and you see that in some of the larger districts. Then we looked at the salary benefit number, basically the 102 level, 200 level cost, and you can see that Reddick is on the higher end for that, and then we flipped it another way, and looked at broadly at the structural expenditures across all categories, not just expenditures for salaries and wages, and again, you're sort of on the higher end. When you look at support services, you're much more in the middle, and that, I think, reflects in some degree what you've done in cost cutting in that area over the last couple of years. And then we did a final kind of merging of those two, the structural and support service expenditures, and you again, are a little bit on the higher end. When you look at the comparable districts in the county, on, on, starting on page 29, you start to see some of the, the fact that you have some kind of a scale and larger ability to, to strength cost, so you're, you know, you're sort of in the middle on your total cost, you're, you're among the highest, you are the highest actually in salary and benefits per EDM, and structural expenditures, because salaries and benefits are such a big piece of that, support expenses, expenditures are more in the middle, but the, the salaries and wages, again, you're in the higher end. We also took a look at 34, special education costs, and as I noted earlier, you have a somewhat higher percentage of the state than the whole, and when you look at the comparable districts, you're a little bit above most of the similarly sized districts, the percentage as a, of special education is a, sort of as a, total role, which is a far left power, but as you go through each exceptionality, obviously, there's a lot of variation. And when you look at, at the county, you're, you're above most of the other districts, although you're, although you're not the hottest. So, you know, that's clearly a bunch of pressure here, and we'll come back to that. So the final section of this report, which is, is not, is not, is not finished yet, that's the most draft, part of our draft, I, I put in the first several areas of exploration. What we're doing here again is, we're not providing recommendations, rather we're saying, what are the things that you could do, what's the list, what's the big list, on the grounds that, there'll be a lot of things on the list that are anathema to different parties, including board members, and really, in the long run, to go here, to address your deficit, probably need to have some consolation of, of different ones of those things, and what we would do in our final piece of analysis, is be able to plug in different assumptions and show you different ways, different results from, from those things. So we want to have all of, all of the various options at our disposal. So for tonight, I provided the initial piece of this, which is just on workforce, and you'll note beginning of 39, we, again, we look kind of statewide, and said, instead of just looking at the other, the comparable sized district, where are you with, since salaries and wages are, and benefits are the vast majority of your budget, you're going to have to address that somehow going forward in order to, to balance the budget, and when we, when we provide you the final report, we'll, we'll also delve into some of the other areas of the budget. For this one, we said, we want to look at where you were compared to other districts as a percentage of revenue, because again, to the extent that your budget is negative revenue serving your cap going forward, and as you can see, the district is, right now is spending a, a larger portion of its, its funding in that area than, than other districts statewide, and that's including the whole 500 district percentage, so there's a lot of reasons that number may be different, but again, it kind of focuses on where you are. This requires of this slide, 49, 69, it's, sorry, 49 is, 40 is a little, is similar to the other ones, it's one, sort of clarified, sort of provided earlier, but what we wanted to do is say, okay, well, given this, and given the number of folks you have now, what are areas that you would need to put on the table in creating this full, everything listed what you might do? Obviously, key issues in, in the academic areas, that you're going to need to have enough quality teachers to provide the kind of education you want to provide, and to, and maintain class sizes at an admirable level. At the same time, you have a variety of different options, including increasing the number of periods taught, offering some programs only at one high school or online, eliminating some programs which you, you might have chosen in the past to reserve for, for very good reasons. You can also look at options like block scheduling, I know you've started to push on, on a cyber school, which is a key initiative that a lot of districts have used, not just to address their charter tuition increases over time, but also provide more educational opportunities, particularly in areas where specialty instruction is not available, or where there's a very limited number of students who want really special areas of instruction. The, I think overall, the next section, I think, is, I mentioned briefly, was to talk a little bit about special education. Special education's costs have gone up a bit higher than, than others over the last few years, and part of that reflects larger enrollment, a number of enrollment special education students, but also special education plan you put into place, where you're bringing the students back to the district. So right now, we have not been able to completely determine where that's, where that's landed. In bringing students back, you obviously create more in-house costs, you have more teacher and coaching costs, but you avoid, charter tuition costs typically are higher, so we frequently recommend that districts acquire that, bring the students back, if you can do it, but I, I think one of the things we would want to do over time, and suggest that you do, is to evaluate sort of whether the cost and the academic impact of the, of the switch that you made, how that's working, and, and how you might make that, 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 before, after. The other area is, is, you know, we think in that area, obviously, to, to do what you want to do, you might see the judicial legal support for how you're handling special education on such a basis of classification, transportation costs, and who is identified as being a non-teen. On compensation levels, on 46, as I mentioned, you know, obviously, because wages and benefits are such a large portion of the budget, some sort of short-term items, in terms of including wage freezes, changes to wage and step patterns, changing the length of the teaching day, how you handle extra duty pay, obviously, those are all marginal issues, and that's part of the reason you're here tonight, but in terms of your kind of overall financial picture going forward, because those are such large inputs into the, the output, into the final numbers that we've seen on the earlier pages, those are all items that will have to be part of a, of a larger discussion about, about district going forward. We also just noted that there are, we, we did not have, in this particular, in this couple of month period, we have not tried to do a comparative analysis in the region of how your pay benefits stack up against other districts that teachers might choose to work in. I think probably you have some of that information, and I'm sure the field has provided some of that to the word, but we did note some of the structural issues in the, in the current current department. You also noted that you've done a lot of healthcare side, and you've clearly paid a lot of attention to that in the last couple of years. Again, it grows consistently exceeding the revenue growth, you may need to do more, and we've noted some areas around that, the number which you, I know, have been talking about in the morning, in the last, the last couple of months. And he also noted that you've had relatively high workforce compensation costs, that you have had a specialist come in and look at that the last year, and probably, time to go back and say, okay, we implemented the circumcations, are they working, if not, what if they're next? And, and finally, we're looking at the area, at the retirement set of programs you've had, and we have not finished our analysis in that area, and we will, we'll rest some of the data from, from Gragel for Pat. The last area in, in this, in this one, is where you're handling professional development, and whether your cost savings are there, and we provided a couple of different possible options in that area. So, as I said, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be finishing the additional parts of this report, we'll be adding sections on tuition, outside tuition payments, facilities, including transportation, administration of finance, and kind of approaching that, and then revenues, and we'll, we'll come back with a full, and not draft for work later in the month. We're, we're happy to have any kind of input from, from all of you and from any other parties, and we're happy to come and do a full presentation of that report, what's done, that would be kind of an initial phase, and then what we would do is, based on discussions with you, and, and how we would cost out some of those different options, and identify how they might affect the multi-year gap that we've identified in this portion of the work. So I hope that's somewhat helpful, I know that it's not as thorough as it might be, whatever we've done, but I'd be happy to take us for questions, and we'll, we'll give you feedback, or, or, or not.
I have a question, I'd like to, moving forward, when we make a financial decision, is it, is it all right for us to reach out to you, maybe, to, to speak with that specific person or area that we might be spending money on, like every single cloud that there you want, and get your opinion out?
We, we will certainly try to, I mean, I don't think that, in the amount of time that we've been able to work, because we're nearly as expert as, as that, that comment might, might imply, but yes, we would be, we would be happy to try to provide you with whatever insightful, and because we work with districts around the state and around the country, we may have some thoughts about what others have done, that might be, that might be an area we would provide.
Chris, do you have an idea roughly, when, when we're, we're going to get a final?
So this report, I think we should be done, I would expect to be able to come back to you and present the final version of this by the end of the month. It's a matter of, I'll be happy to work with you through the superintendent, and come up with a date to come back and present it.
Compared to the, what's, what's going else up here, how is this differing, and I think you have answered one.
Sure.
You've given them some recommendations, and they utilize them, or what this one is.
So I think that, two things, one is, the, in, in the case of, they had an existing multi-year projection, and we were able to kind of build on that and provide some specific additional initiatives, they had a, they had thought a little bit about their kind of multi-year plan, and where it went, and they had some pre-identified priorities, which were there to go, so we were able to kind of cost them. In, in the Erie case, Erie has, similar to you, had kind of faced a long-term financial challenge, and they have, I think their, their situation is somewhat set in two ways. First of all, unlike you, they have not, particularly the last five years, they have not raised local taxes as much as you have. So that was an area of clear kind of priority for them, especially since they have been doing increases in state aid. And then the other fact was, a lot of the items that we're sort of, will be raising in our report, they had started to do, so they had taken some fairly drastic action in their case, and so there was a case of identifying what the remaining list was, in your case, I think there may be a somewhat longer list of options. So that's a long way of saying, in your case, we probably don't have the resources to go through and provide, and cost, you know, 200 ideas, so we, we'd really like to work with you, to say, okay, of these, we can give you a rough idea, I think most of you would be able to see, what's, what's going to be a significant number, but I think we need to prioritize where we put our resources, to prioritize, I think, as helpful to you as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Thank you.
Move over to the signing list, Joe Lally.
Welcome, good evening, Board, SFT Members Central Office. I just want to come briefly to talk to you guys, and, about the importance of retaining the dean position at West Grant High School. Stanley Savile was our dean, he left for a principal position at Mahanoi Area High School, and in the short year that we were together, Mr. Supan, our assistant principal, myself and Mr. Savile, we were able to do a lot of good things in terms of increasing student achievement, and getting the culture, getting the kids involved with the school, and that was all due because of the dean allowing myself to be more of an instructional leader instead of a manager of the building. We currently got our Keystone scores back, we were in double digits improvements in science and in English, and I attribute that to the time that Mr. Savile allowed myself and Mr. Supan to get in the, in the classroom, see what the teachers were doing, work with the teachers, and work with the kids. I, I understand that we're in financial straits, however, as you guys all deal with on a daily basis, as school board members, education is changing, and to not replace that position in my mind, would have us take steps backwards of what we're trying to do at West Grant High School. And basically, that's sort of why I come to you today, this evening, for your support in the future on retaining that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that, Mr. Sheridan. I plead with the board to consider continuing that position at West Grant High School. We had, we had savings in that position in the 2017 budget, and made, made the change And made the changes to a dean of student, not only to see those changes in the budget, but also to provide the support that the school needed to improve on our instructional leadership, which Mr. Supan and Mr. Lally have done a great job of doing this past year. So, we'd like that to continue. The size of the school, the makeup of the students, the student achievement gaps that we see there, the safety issues that that school and other high schools might face, and the support to our teachers, I feel, is very important. So, I thank Mr. Lally for coming forward, and I would hope that in the future, the board will reconsider placing that dean of student position back at West Granton High School. Thank you.
I have a quick statement on that as well. I think that every single person on this board, not that I want to speak with them, would be more than happy to continue that position. But in the current state that we're in, I would be hopeful that both the principal and vice-principal are able to continue doing their job, and I have a lot of faith that you can do that, along with the hall monitors and the police officer that's in that building full-time. I think the safety issues can be properly addressed. And I appreciate the effort that you made tonight to come forward. But I don't want you to think that the position has been, at least in my opinion, eliminated for no reason. And it's always a viable option, it's always something that I think we can put back into play. But at this point in time, I think it's something that we have to try to do that.
The next one, and excuse me if I mispronounce it, is Joan Haddowitz.
Paul Lawrence.
Haddowitz.
Thank you. I'm not a member of the school district, I'm just a taxpayer from Scranton. Just a couple of admin things before I get into the meat of my comments. I would suggest that you have copies of the agenda available to the public sometime before, seconds before the meeting begins, that we can see what the agenda is, we wish to comment on those items. Do you have a webpage where we could download the agenda in advance?
Back to you.
Yes, the Board of Education does have a page on the Scranton School District website.
And is the agenda available there?
The agenda is available there.
Is it up there 24 hours before the meeting or?
That I cannot.
Maybe I can answer that, sometime, yes, usually it is. But sometimes the agenda is changed to betterment after we, the board discusses some issues, and the agendas maybe change at due time. So, sometimes there's an agenda that comes out at the last minute, but it's pretty better.
In fact, if people understand that, that at least to say maybe a 90% solution of what you're going to talk about will be useful. That way, if we want to do some research of our own, to speak knowledge about a topic, we have some time. It's worrisome that if people spilled out in the hallway and not enough seating for your meeting, I don't know how often it's happened, but you should have sufficient chairs if you can pack them in. And if this is not a large enough venue, you start thinking about holding your meetings elsewhere.
Again, ma'am, usually a regular meeting is held at one of the high schools, Scranton High School or West Granton High School. This is a special meeting tonight that was adjusted to be brought in here for special reasons. But like I said, usually we have them at high schools.
Okay. And one thing is, I found PFM's presentation very interesting and provocative. Obviously, it wasn't flashing on the screen behind you. I was expecting it would be, since somebody had put that up. Is that document going to be uploaded onto your webpage?
It's a draft document at this time, and when the document is completed, I believe he said he'd be back in a few weeks, we will upload the entire document.
That would be very good for the general public who have questions. And first thing I want to say is, I want to congratulate the school district on this school district cyber academy that we have going on a small oracle in the metro of the Times-Terrine. I think that's the way you need to think, you need to think in 21st century solutions. And, you know, not, you know, 25 years ago. And I think the cyber academy approach will open up a world of online learning opportunities. And online learning may be a way for you to find savings in future budgets. Because, let's face it, your biggest cost factor is personality. And online, you know, over time, online teaching and education may allow you, you may want, students may want physics classes, but they, you know, you don't have enough physics teachers. So, you know, have some online physics instruction, doesn't give you a lab experience, but at least you'd be able to do certain things. So, I'm glad to see that. I would be interested if you could, if not tonight, your next meeting, by the way, when is your next meeting?
I believe it's going to be at the beginning of September.
It's not Labor Day, it's Monday after Labor Day. You want the Monday after Labor Day?
Yeah.
I want to hear, but.
It'll be advertised.
Now, one thing I'd be interested in is how many students you are going to enroll for this coming academic year in your cyber academy? And how does that translate into cost savings for what you would have paid for them had they been in a bricks-and-mortar environment? The second thing, there was a editorial in the Times-Terrine on G26 about the district being placed on the Department of Education's financial watch list. Now, many of these issues were discussed in PFM's presentation. But I think the general public would like to know, as you enter a new budget year, how do you plan to return the district to financial health? He referenced, if I heard correctly, that you have a structural deficit in the budget which rose by $3 million a year. I mean, that gives me the key to these, as you're a taxpayer, okay? You ought to remember, this is Scranton, this is Scranton, where the city literally attacked by the Lebanon lawsuit. What is it good when you bring for a pocket on their side, okay? And though you may have two taxing authorities, the school district, the city, and the county, taxpayers have only one payment account. And so, you know, you need to keep that in mind as your structural deficit grows, you need to get a handle on it. I don't know whether, you know, he answers your answer, you need to talk to the school district, you talk to the state. But, you know, I don't think most citizens can take that much more of a real estate like a property taxes. So, I'd be interested in that over, if not tonight, over the next meetings that you have.
Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we do have a three-minute.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
Thank you, I welcome your, I welcome your input and all citizens, we all do. And we're glad that you come, and we always like to hear it.
I will see you in September, Monday after Labor Day.
Thank you. Okay, Rosemary Gold, Scranton Federation of Teachers.
Good evening, directors, thank you for this special meeting tonight, it was quite informative. I would echo the citizens' comment, I think everybody in this room should have had a copy of that document so we could better follow along. So, I hope I don't have to follow the right to know, follow up or file a right-to-know request. But if I do.
It's been offered to you. Mr. Book Director.
I'll get it in a second, thank you, Mr. Bush. Thanks. I too am very, very interested in the follow-up meeting of PFM. I know that they have spoken to several people in this district with input, and I was also asked to provide some input, and I did. Some of what I said at my meeting with PFM did not come out tonight. And also, we made that information part of our fact-finding report. Maybe we're going to share that with the public as well, because I didn't hear some of the things that I think are important financial costs. I did hear him reference other school districts in Lackawanna County, and we did make that a part of our fact-finding report. And we did a monetary factual analysis of every district compared with Scranton School District in Lackawanna County. We did an analysis of the number of teachers in Lackawanna, in our district compared to that in other districts in Lackawanna County. And we're willing to share that information with this board and anybody else in the county who wants to see that. It took us hours, obviously, to compile that information, and I don't know the number of right-to-nos we filed with other districts in Lackawanna County. But I can absolutely tell you that much of what this gentleman spoke about tonight we're very cognizant of because we studied it and we analyzed it. And everybody likes to talk about salaries and benefits because that is a large chunk of change. And when you're dealing with the district of over 10,000 students, 2,000 of whom are special needs children, and a growing population of ELL students, 36 or more languages spoken in this district, that requires special work. I take exception with the citizens' comment regarding, for example, the study of physics. Online courses are being launched. Subjects like physics, chemistry, language, they do offer those things online, and the students are shortchanged. Those are not subjects that we should be increasing the number of cyber kids. We will encourage those children to come back into the regular classroom for those kinds of subjects. This is not a good idea to have every kid sit home on a computer all day, if indeed, if they do that, because we all know in this room, they get into a tense rut. And we have a mortality rate as far as it goes for graduation there. It was a disaster. So, that is not always the answer to solving problems in a district the size of ours. And most of this, we can obviously discuss on a night. We're always going to argue over certain things, but we cannot argue over fact. Fact is fact. And that's why when we had finally, we presented fact, based on fact, not what we think, not what we hoped, but what was fact. And when I tell you we were there better than four hours, and I think Mr. Norr and his team would verify that in the presentations, so when the gentleman gets up and speaks to the numbers, when he speaks to the finances that he spoke to, the Scranton Federation of Teachers for one is most definitely aware of the analysis, because we did. And we're pretty good at math. The next thing I would like to do is come and thank Mr. Schuster and the board members present for the grievance hearing that we had a few weeks back, the way I can see it's in this fact tonight. It was a very interesting night, to say the least, and we'll see what happens. But I think if we could prevent grievances in this district, particularly as many of you sit there, prevent arbitration grievances from going forward and get things settled early on, that would also save this district money. And we don't want this district to go the same route as other agencies did in this city and have all these arbitrations filed, and then that costs the Scranton School District money when it doesn't have to. Things need to change in that department. Several of you here have signed several collective bargaining agreements. And where I grow up in Southside, when you sign your name to something, it means something. That signature should be your bond that this is going to work. So, we would ask you to get involved in that, make sure that the collective bargaining agreement is followed and followed in this district. We also look forward to the start of a new academic year. Unfortunately. Well, I'm going to ask you for a minute. Unfortunately, until this afternoon, some of our teachers had not known where they were going to start school this September. The bids came down at the end of June, and today, some of the people found out where they're going to be at the assignment as of September. This has to stop. This must definitely stop. When the bid comes down, the posting comes down, the bids should be filled, and that, those people should be known by where they're going. This is something you've got to address. This can't keep on like this, it just cannot. And so, I thank you for your time again.
Marie Schumacher.
Yes. I guess I'd like to start by saying once again, you can't hear?
You want to come forward a little bit, Chief? Please. I'm going to direct and stand here.
Sorry. I'm really saddened by the fact that almost every time I come to one of these meetings, it's all about dollars. I would like to know when our education rates are going to go up. It's so disappointing to pick up the paper and see where we stand. It's really depressing. Regarding, I have a lot in common with what Joan said on the agenda. I did calls today asking for help on finding it, and I did not get much help. But I think you should be, in addition to having them available online, you need to put more meat on the bones of this. The resolution to approve the fact-finding committee, no summary, no nothing, so you don't know if you want to stop doing something that you're doing tonight to come, because you don't know what positions are being taken. The resolution to approve the assignment of easements. How much revenue are we going to get there on those, and how many are there, and what were their locations? Resolution 1201 grievance, nothing to indicate to you people, people other than you who are intimately involved with what that means. Same thing with resolution to approve settlement grievance, settlement grievance with whom? Not even stated. So, I think your agendas really need, really need work. And so does the improvement of the scores. Thank you.
That exhausted our public speech, and we seem to, Mr. Schuster, ten eighty-one.
The members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton. Whereas pursuant to Title 43 PA CBSA 1101.802, fact-finding panel, Scranton School District and Scranton Federation of Teachers, jointly agree to participate in fact-finding and set forth in Act 88 of 1992 and the Pennsylvania Employee Labor Relations Act, Act 195 of 1970, and more specifically, in the statute directed at the vote. Whereas on July 31st, 2017, submission of both written and oral testimony at time of hearing of the matter, the fact-finder issued his recommendations. And whereas the fact-finder issued in order directing for the 10-day period commencing with the board vote, during, occurring on or before August 11th, 2017, the contents of the recommendation have remained confidential until such time as the parties had an opportunity to consider whether to accept or reject recommendations. Whereas the Scranton School District hereby rejects the fact-finding report and the recommendations of the fact-finder respectively.
Here in a second, another question. No question? Sunday roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
And one, Mr. Lech?
Yes, to the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, is the recommendation of the Superintendent in the Buildings and Grounds Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Scranton Sewer Authority has sold its asset to Pennsylvania American Water Company. And whereas the Scranton Sewer Authority exists to obtain needed and needed easements, and whereas the Scranton School District is willing to allow easements to service pipelines and combine sewer workflows to benefit the city and has offered set easements to the Scranton School District. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the easements be approved and executed per the terms and conditions of set easements per attached personal.
Here in a second, another question?
The only thing I have under the question is, being that some of the residents didn't take the time to come out specifically.
I can answer that. Okay, I would answer that. This is an assignment of easements that already exist. It's because of the transfer from the Scranton Sewer Authority to the Pennsylvania American Water Company that we're just merely assigning easements that already exist. They had successor language in them. This is, this is almost like measuring twice to cut once. It's a little bit of an overkill, but we're doing it just to accommodate them as to existing easements. So, it's merely an assignment, okay?
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Anything else under the question? Roll call?
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Nothing else, sir. Okay. Mrs. Olesky, personnel...
Yes, to the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, if the personnel committee presents the following resolution for your consideration, be it resolved that Charles Kupliski, Jerry Kupliski, sorry, be appointed to active maintenance foreman for the period of the maintenance foreman's absence. There will be no additional compensation for this period. At the time of the regular maintenance foreman's retirement, Mr. Kupliski will officially become the maintenance foreman. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
No.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Six affirmative, three negative motion.
Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the personnel committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that Jerry Boozy be appointed to the first position of team leader at the Electric City Academy. Appointed contingent upon the completion of all required employee documentation. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one negative.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the personnel committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that Christine Sandra Sorrow be appointed to the position of intervention specialist two at the Electric City Academy. Appointed contingent upon completion of all required employee documentation. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
No.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Five affirmative, four negative motion passes.
To the members of the School Directors of the City of Scranton, the personnel committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that Molly Abduallah be appointed to the position of title program manager. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Six affirmative, three negative.
Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the personnel committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that Shannon Rucker be appointed to the position of E.L. Program Manager. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Under question? Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Six affirmative, three negative.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, is the recommendation of the superintendent and personnel committee that the attachment of appointments, assignments, retirement, resignations, and leave of absence be approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, medical, and child abuse reports. Salaries are in accordance to collective bargaining agreements. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Or Mr., yes, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Nine affirmative.
To the members of the Board of Directors, the Special Education Committee hereby recommends the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the School District of the City of Scranton is subjected to administration procedures, proceedings, and civil suits within the approprieness of a student's special education program has been challenged. What, I'm sorry, is there another?
You're missing. You're out of order.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, the next one is the eligibility list.
Yeah, this is the regulation, the assignments, appointments, and retirements.
We did that one in there. Next one is the eligibility.
Oh, you understand, right? Eligibility.
Hearing current speech, transportation.
Is it mine?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
It would be the number nine.
Okay. It's the recommendation of the superintendent. It would be this one, right? Why does it have to be that thing? Is it mine or is it yours?
Personnel.
Personnel. The board of members of the School District Directors of the City of Scranton, is the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the following be approved. Be it resolved that the eligibility list for the candidates for teaching positions in biology, psychology, human appeared, special education, and speech language, as established by the committee of teacher selection, be adopted as submitted. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Yeah, I'm just, here in a second, under roll call, I mean, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine, nothing. No passes.
To the members of the Board of Directors, the Special Education Committee hereby recommends...
You're the last one now.
Why isn't it with that?
Sorry.
As Scranton School Board of Directors, the Labor Relations Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas 32 B.J. SEIU filed a grievance regarding Article 21, and whereas the grievance occurred about labor relations began August 2nd, 2017, and both sides have the opportunity to present evidence and big arguments on issues presented. Therefore deliberating on the same reasons as due to the above, this is your right to abide by. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question? Roll call?
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
No.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, two negatives.
All right, Carol. There we go.
To the members of the Board of Directors, the Special Education Committee hereby recommends the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the School District of the City of Scranton is subjected of administration procedures and civil suits within the approprieness of a student's special education programs has been challenged, or students have been filed in CD-OR number 18964-16-17, JG-ODR number 18991-16117, and CE-ODR number 19323-16-17. And whereas the parties have reached a settlement on an agreement in a matter upon the terms and conditions previously provided for your consideration. And therefore be it resolved that the settlements as indicated above be approved upon the terms and conditions as described, and the superintendent or directors of special education are hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to consummate this matter. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question?
I'm the question, Mr. Chairman, for the solicitor. Are these the three...
Yes, they are. They are, but one of them was removed. The TP was removed. That was objection of the law. That's not in this list. That is not in this list.
Not on this list. Thank you for that clarification. Anything else under the question?
I'm the question, Mr. Norr. Do you have the settlements on hand?
I don't. I had them last month, and if you remember, we discussed them, and they were removed from the, they were tabled last month. They were tabled. They were discussed and tabled. I asked Mrs. Carteg, and I met with Mr. Sunday today and went over them, and I'm sorry. I apologize, I didn't have them. But they were previously on the agenda and discussed them.
Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lech?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Nothing further? Anything else on your board?
I have new business that's more informative rather than potential agenda I use for next week. As our representative on the NEIU board, I feel it important to bring back the district's, well, the negative news that's been surrounding us tonight. We do have some positives to report, that we are bringing back $42,000 in January from administrative reassignments to retirees and attritioning jobs. And going forward, our contribution will be down $42,000 going forward after we receive this challenge.
Mr. Casey and Mr. Chairman, if I could just, also, I want to point out that through our efforts with Ecollect, today I received a settlement agreement on a tax audit, tax collection ad, and we're going to recover $183,000 on additional revenue.